Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 6th, 2014 Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. And I would like to call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
No further.
I've got a motion by Mr. Schu, a second by Mr. Harrison. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries and the agenda has been approved. And before we move on to reports, I'd like to recognize our SRO from Hickory Ridge High School, Ms. Candace Elwood. Officer Elwood, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate all you do out at Hickory Ridge High School. Thank you very much for being here. And we will move on to reports, and we will ask Dr. Van Heuklim to the podium for our academic data update.
Good evening, members of the board. We're going to present to you tonight the academic data from 2014. And so I want to work through this presentation with you. It's going to take us a little while, but you've had access to it, so I'll skip some slides, hoping that you've seen it, try to catch the highlights here. But before we get started, I thought this cartoon was appropriate. So I do want you to take a second and read this. "The Need for Multiple Measures." This is a quote from Albert Einstein. For those in the audience, it says, "Everybody is a genius, but if you judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, it will live its whole life believing that it's stupid." And so I set that stage tonight because for the first time in 15 years of my life working in education, I feel like the obsession around test scores is really at a max. And we tend to put a lot of stock in test scores. And to be sure, I'm not one to run away from test scores. I'm not one to run away from data. I've always enjoyed data as a principal, as a teacher, and in my current role as deputy superintendent. But I want to kind of set that as a context, because as we work through this presentation tonight, we're going to see some of the new measures that are going to be coming out and released by the state of North Carolina that are really going to tell a story about our schools that I'm not convinced is true. So I want you to keep that in the back of your mind as we work through that. Tonight, we're going to look at two pieces of data. The primary, two primary pieces of data that we get as schools falls into two buckets. One is growth data, and one is proficiency data. And so I have two pictures here to kind of illustrate what those are. Growth, obviously, is growth over time. And really, growth measures what we do in schools every day. We get kids on the first day of school, and we expect them to grow and learn over 180 days. And when they leave us, we expect them to be better off than when we found them. Proficiency, however, it has a direct correlation to socioeconomic status. Okay? So proficiency, as illustrated there by the picture, is a bar that we set, and we try to get as many kids over that bar as possible. In many respects, we look at proficiency as a minimum standard that we hope all kids can know and be able to do in reading and math and science and other subjects. But what we know from 30 to 40 years of social science research is that that particular number is directly related, almost one-to-one, to socioeconomic status. And if you were to drive your car around neighborhoods in Cabarrus County schools, you could probably predict by the price of the homes in the neighborhoods what the proficiency of those schools would be. So I want to keep that in context, because we, as school people, really like to focus on growth. We like to see how we did with the kids once we got them, and what we did with them over 180 years, or 180 days, excuse me. So another piece to support that is this is some North Carolina data from many, many schools, and every single dot represents a school. And this particular chart graphs academic achievement and poverty. Okay? And you can see there's a linear progression there that basically says, the higher the free or reduced lunch population, the lower the academic achievement. Okay? Pretty intuitive for many of us, all right? However, if you take that same graph and you map growth, you can see that poverty is not an indicator of academic growth. Okay? So basically, it's saying that, you know what? Poverty can be controlled for when we measure growth. And so when we look at the two indicators, whether it's proficiency or growth, we need to look at both of them. It tells a story of how we're doing in our educational system, but growth is really something we should focus on, and something we should celebrate as we have data to do so. So that kind of sets the context for what we're going to talk about tonight. Let's first dig into proficiency. Here you have our proficiency data as compared to our like-school districts. What you're going to see here in general is that we increased our proficiency from 2012 to 13, to the 13-14 school year. Overall, we increased that by 9.8%. You'll also notice that our rank did drop. So while in 2012-13, we were 20th in the state in our proficiency, this past year, we were 27th in the state. So that means other districts did get more kids proficient at a faster rate. You can see some of our benchmark districts, both local and similar there. This next slide helps us dive into some of the subcategories that make up that 9.8%. You can see our largest gains were in the early elementary years, third grade and fourth grade. We also had a pretty big jump in Math 1, 13% proficiency jump in Math 1. That kind of highlights our individual areas. Now we're going to get into growth, okay? And this particular slide is one I've used with our principals over the last several weeks to really highlight the good things that we're doing in Cabarrus County schools. Our growth metrics are color-coded, red, green, and blue, all right? Green is average, blue is above average, and red is below average. Pretty simple. And if you read the key at the bottom there, blue is two standard errors above the mean, and red is two standard errors below the mean. It uses a system called EVAAS, developed by SAS out of Raleigh. Okay? You're familiar with that company. What we know about EVAAS is it does one thing really well. It distills the margins, okay? So basically, when things are blue, we have a high degree of reliability that that's pretty good. And when things are red, we have a high degree of reliability that's pretty bad, okay? Or below average. Green is a large swath in the middle, okay? And what I've done for you here is I've highlighted this box right here at the bottom right-hand corner, which shows that in reading, our three-year average in 4th through 8th grade is a blue .3, okay? So if you were to be interviewed by the New York Times, or our local paper, and asked, "How is the reading instruction in Cabarrus County schools?", what I want you to know is, reading instruction in Cabarrus County schools over time is really, really good. This is high-level data that just kind of lets us look from that 30,000-foot level of how our reading instruction is doing, and we have a lot to be proud of. We are above average. We are two standard errors above the average growth in the state of North Carolina in reading. What you'll also notice is, using a three-year average, this coming year is going to be a very important year for us, because we're going to lose these red categories from 2012 that make up our three-year average, okay? And so these red areas in 2012 will go away, and we hope to replace them with green and blue boxes in that same three-year average to increase that performance in reading. Same story in math. Historically, we've always done very well in math in Cabarrus County schools, and you'll see a similar story here if you look at that bottom right-hand box. We, again, are two standard errors above the average of North Carolina for our growth in math, when you take into account 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade and a three-year average. Once again, you have two red boxes from 2012 that will go away next year, and hopefully we'll replace them with blue and green boxes for this coming year's school data. However, we do have an area of concern in 5th grade math. This red box here from 2014, we're going to have to carry with us for three years, okay? That'll be part of our three-year average for the next three years. So that is an area that, when we look at things, we want to say, "Okay, what are we doing in 5th grade math? How can we realign our curriculum and make sure we're progressing at the state average?" Here is our science growth. We continue to have concerns in 5th grade science. Last year, that was a topic of conversation. But once again, 5th grade science is an area of concern, and we have completely rewritten the 5th grade curriculum this summer. We have bought new resources for our 5th grade science teachers, including iCurio. And we are very hopeful that we will adjust and fix this problem for the 2015 school year. I know our principals have a keen eye on that particular indicator. We talk about it regularly at our principal meetings. I think a highlight you can see there is our 8th grade science is consistently blue over three years in a row. This next slide shows our North Carolina final exams. This is new data as of Friday, so you did not have access to this prior to Friday. We just got this released. But you can see in our high schools, all green and blue, growth data in all of our North Carolina final exams, including a nice little uptick in our ACT data. So really proud of our ACT data overall. Grew a little bit there, so we're really proud of that. One note about final exams, they do not carry proficiency numbers, okay? North Carolina final exams only carry EVAAS data. We don't get proficiency rating for final exams. Just a little side note. And this is a really nice slide for our 8th grade, I'm sorry, our middle school, science and social studies. You'll notice they are all blue, straight across the board, for their performance on North Carolina final exams in science and social studies. Overall, this boils down into school-level data. You can see here the number of schools that met or exceeded their growth as a composite. What this slide really tells us is that in 2013, we really had a banner year. That was a year ago. You'll notice in 2013, 37 out of our 39 schools met or exceeded their growth. We fell back to 23 schools in this past school year. We're scratching our heads trying to figure out why that happened. One of the anecdotal stories that we've discussed internally, and as we talk with other districts, is we do have a sense that our curriculum was aligned faster than many other districts around the state of North Carolina for Common Core. You know, 2013 was the first year of Common Core, and so one working theory is that we adjusted quicker than other districts. They got a year under their belt, they figured it out, just like we did, and then they started performing. So inherently, EVAAS is competitive, so as you get your EVAAS growth, it is compared to every other district in the state. So as we had a banner year in 2013, others figured it out and started to fall in line. And then here's a really good slide. This is about our individual teachers. You'll remember last year in the Charlotte Observer, Cabarrus County schools was the number-one school system in the Charlotte region for the percent of teachers that were effective or highly effective. That was at 91%. And again, here this year, we remain the same, at 91%. So, you know, while our schools as a whole dropped off a little bit, our individual teachers, the percentage of teachers that are effective, remain the same. So it'll be interesting to see where our rank stacks up in the state and also in the Charlotte region as we learn about how other districts did with the percent of teachers. Again, as you're a community member, a parent, and as a board, one of the questions you need to kind of ponder is, what's the chances of you getting a great teacher? And here we have one data metric, certainly not the end-all-be-all of data metrics, but it says 91% of our teachers are meeting growth or exceeding growth with their kids. And so we can celebrate that hard work of our teachers. Another metric that we use is to dig into our subgroups. This is a really important metric, because many times you can hide behind the law of averages, right? And so what this forces schools to do is to dig into different subgroups that would be children that could be hidden by an average. And so Cabarrus County schools has over 150 subgroups. They are divided by race, they are divided by gender, they are divided by language, they are divided by special ed, all kinds of ways that you put labels on children. And so how are you doing those particular groups of kids? And so you'll notice that the entire state dropped pretty considerably in the percent of AMOs that met. We went from 90.8 to 81.8, and our rank did fall from 19th in the state to 29th in the state. So that is something that we're digging into to kind of find what particular subgroups are we not meeting with our instructional models. Of course, you've heard about our graduation rate. We're very proud of our graduation rate, and that continues to climb, as do many schools in the state of North Carolina. But our rank did climb, I believe, from 31 to 25 in the state of North Carolina, so we're really proud of our graduation rate. And finally, we have our ACT rank. Did get a little uptick there. Over three years, it's been fairly static. We went from 18th to 20th to 19th, but our overall composite did go up by .2%. So a little increase there. What I like about the ACT is it's not tied to a particular teacher. I think of the ACT as a way to measure the whole school program, and so this is a good indicator for high schools in particular to see how their entire program is doing, not just in an individual subject area. Okay, those are the growth and the proficiency data. I'm going to take us back to this slide, because the next thing that I do want to talk about is the grading of schools that is going to take place in January. As you've been made aware, the General Assembly has passed a law saying, "We're going to grade schools A, B, C, D, E," or not A, A, B, C, D, F, based on these criteria. And they're going to be public, they're going to be published in the newspaper, and I kind of look at it as a sign on the front door, A, B, C, D, F, okay? And I want to bring us back to this particular cartoon, because while, again, I believe that data is important, I believe we should look at data, we should take it for what it means, we should analyze it and try to get better every single year, I don't believe that some of these metrics tell the true story of what happens inside our schools every single day. And so I'm going to share with you a couple slides that kind of help to tease out that story a little bit, and then I'm going to tell you a couple stories. First of all, this is the grading scale, okay? Next year, we're going to operate on a 15-point scale. When they publish the results in January, they're going to use a 15-point scale for last year's results. Then it's going to increase to a 10-point scale, so it's going to get more rigorous over time, all right? But you'll see for this coming year, when they publish these results in January, an A will be from 85 to 100, a B would be 70, 84, et cetera, okay? Then the next school year, it's going to get a little bit more rigorous. The next slide that I'm going to show you is going to be what we predict our schools to be, okay? So what we've done is we've tried to take the state formula to the best that we can. We're trying to predict how many A schools will we have in Cabarrus County schools, how many B schools will we have, C, D, et cetera. And what I've done for you is I've also included, on the left-hand side, our free and reduced lunch population, okay? And I think that's part of the story, all right? And so you'll notice, as you look at that graph, you can see a direct correlation between the letter grade and the free and reduced lunch population at a particular school, all right? And there's a reason for that. To what I said earlier at the beginning of the presentation, proficiency and growth are two very different metrics. And the school grading system is heavily skewed towards proficiency ratings. For elementary and middle school, 80% of their letter grade is made up by their proficiency score, okay? 20% is made up by growth, all right? So, and what we know from research is that high free and reduced lunch schools are going to have a harder time getting more kids proficient, okay? And what I'd like to surmise here is that the grading scale doesn't necessarily measure how well a school is doing. It really measures the neighborhood, it measures the community, and other factors. And I really hesitate to say that some of our schools are D schools. I really hesitate. To be sure, we have work to do in our schools. But I believe that this particular grading system perpetuates the narrative in our country that we have bad public schools, and I don't really believe that. And I want to share a couple stories with you that I think will resonate with what you guys know to be true of Cabarrus County schools. The first one is the Performance Learning Center, okay? I think every single one of you have been a part of our annual celebration at the PLC, where we invite legislators and other community members to really celebrate the work of the Performance Learning Center. Here we have a school that is designed by intention to reach out to our most at-risk children, kids that don't necessarily fit the mold of a traditional school. These kids, as you've heard, stand up in front of you, tell testimony of how this school saved their life, literally. You've heard these words come out of their mouth. They go on to be successful, productive citizens in our society, gainfully employed, pursuing their education. I refuse to believe that the PLC is a failing school, and it would receive a D under these metrics. I don't believe it's a D school. I really don't. So that's a story, that's a real-life story here in Cabarrus County schools, that this particular model is going to tell our community and our public that the PLC is a D school when we know that it's not. It is saving kids, it's not hurting children, okay? Another example that I want to share with you is Royal Oaks. Royal Oaks, you know, is 80% free and reduced lunch. Under these metrics, Royal Oaks would also be a D school. It would be a D school. But I can tell you, I've seen the EVAAS data of every single teacher in that building, and guess what? 100% of the teachers that work at Royal Oaks are meeting their growth targets. And if schools are inherently defined by the teachers that work inside of them, right? How can we say Royal Oaks is a failing school if their teachers are growing those kids every single year? They're taking the kids they have that walk in the door, and they grow those kids almost more than a full year's of growth every single year. So I would say to you that Royal Oaks is another example, and we have others, but those are the two I'll share with you tonight, that under this system would be marked a D. And yet, I do not believe that they are D schools. And unfortunately, our community, and in the newspaper, we're going to hear that we have X number of D schools and C schools. But schools are so much more than these test scores. And you know this, right? I mean, they are so much more. When you go to our events, when you see what our teachers do with our kids, after-school clubs, sports, et cetera, schools are way bigger than these test scores. So I give you our results today, not, "We're going to take this data, we're going to get better." You know me, I want to win, just like anybody else, in whatever metric you put out there. And we're going to always try to do better. But I want to balance our approach and our judgment on how we're doing as a school system here in Cabarrus County, but also in the state of North Carolina, because I feel like sometimes the pendulum is swung a little bit too far. At this point, I'll take your questions.
Great, thank you, Jason. We certainly do appreciate your presentation and the data that you bring, and there's a lot there. So we will dig into it a little bit and ask some questions, if you want to, board members. You're certainly not obligated, but we will start with Mr. Walter.
What jumps right at me is that, basically, you're trying to teach to a test. Is that incentivizing to teach to a test is exactly the opposite of what we really want to do? Do we know what the state is going to do with these grades?
They're going to make them public, and so I can only speculate, right? I mean, every school in the state of North Carolina is going to receive a letter grade. We're in the same boat as every other school system in the state of North Carolina. As with all of our data, we're always above the state average, we're typically in the top 20. We do very well with our academic data, and this will be no different. My fear is that the public will lose confidence in public schools because of grades A, B, C, D that they're very familiar with.
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, and so I don't know how...
It seems to be the opposite effect of what...
Yeah.
...of grading schools.
Yeah.
The only question that came to mind here is, why a three-year average? Why do we use, is that internal, or is that standard? Is that...
Yeah, that's a state determination.
That is a state determination.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll pass it to Carolyn.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, when are we going to stand up and say, "No way. We fought when they tried to label children. Now they're labeling schools. And they're labeling the school, and that's the children in it. And we know when you label something, everybody's going to say, 'Oh, I don't want to go to that school.'" Then they'll start running to another school, and you're going to over-populate one school, because nobody wants to go with the school that's labeled the F school or the D school. They want to go to the other ones. And I do not believe in labeling, and that's exactly what the state's going to be doing. They're going to be labeling our schools. And so we've got to stand up now and say, "No, we don't want to do this." And so I think we need to take our stand now and say, "We don't want any part of this." And I just, again, we're, again, testing. We do too much of it, and again, I think we need to take a stand and say, "We don't like this."
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker.
Well, you know, Jason, I could talk on this for a while, and I'll try to spare the listening audience too much, but on the formula that is being used for the grades by the state, what are the components in that formula? So the audience, I mean, I don't even know what it is, and I know in my conversations with several of the leaders of several large school districts, they're all extremely concerned. And, you know, recently, we just had a ranking. One of our, two of our schools were actually listed as receiving awards in a national publication. I think it was Cox Mill and Mount Pleasant? And Central.
Yes.
Yeah, they got mentioned. And so those three stand out as getting a grade, and I don't know what their grade is. You might have access to that, but it would be nice to know what that grade was, because here they were mentioned in some of the top schools in the state, as well as in the country. And they probably are not going to fare all that well on the grades. I don't know if you have that available, but it would be nice to know that. But if you could, could you articulate to us what the formulas are that they're using for this grading process?
So I'm glad you brought that up. That is the primary reason I separated this table into elementary, middle, and high school, because they're different. The formula is actually not so kind to elementary and middle schools. The elementary and middle school formula, 80% of their score comes from their proficiency rating, 20% of their score comes from their growth rating, okay? So heavily skewed towards proficiency. However, with high schools, they have multiple indicators, including proficiency. So high school, you have proficiency, you have growth, you have a category called math rigor, which is the number of graduates that were enrolled and passed a fourth math class, passed Algebra II, okay? Graduation rate and your ACT score. So you have five different measures for a high school that make up your total composite, whereas elementarys only have two. Two of those are very controllable to some extent. So, for example, graduation rate and math course rigor, across the state of North Carolina, that's a scheduling. You just make all those kids go to the fourth math. So you'll find most high schools in the state of North Carolina have almost 95% of their graduates going into that fourth math or higher. So that's why you'll notice, too, that we have more A high schools than we do elementary and middle schools. Okay, good point.
This was taken over a three-year period, and if, so a part of that period was the period where we had this huge decrease, because they changed all the grading scales. Now, those grading scales that we got introduced to us last year and caused quite an uproar amongst, in the community, because no one understood why the testing scores were, but because this test became so much more rigorous, and we raised the proficiency bar to a totally different level than what it had been before, that should have had a major impact on this overall three-year grading scale. Would you assume that's the case?
So, the three-year average is only for the EVAAS growth. The slide's at the top. And Matthew, correct me if I'm wrong here, but these graphs here are the only ones that take into account a three-year average. The actual school grade comes from the previous year, am I right? So there's not a three-year average in these particular grades. They're all directly related to how our kids did in 2013-14. Does that make sense?
Okay, so we don't have that aberration in this...
No, there's no, right. Every year is by itself. Every year is single.
So, and I guess read-to-achieve is figured into this, and how does that figure into the proficiency model?
So read-to-achieve is K3, so it really doesn't play into this model, other than third grade. So your third-grade proficiency rates are figured into this, but kindergarten, first and second grade are not configured into this. Correct.
All right, I'm going to yield at this point, and then I'll let someone else take it over.
That's fine. And board members, if something comes up that you want to come back to later, just ask, and I will recognize you, because it's a lot, there's a lot here. So hopefully, we'll get some good questions as we go forward, and we'll go with Mr. Schu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason, how does this new school grading compare to the, what we, I guess we still have School of Distinction, School of Excellence for the elementary schools primarily?
Yeah, we don't have those titles anymore. Those titles went away, and so this is our new...
When did that take place?
That was in 2011 or 12?
Two or three years ago.
Yeah, I think it was 2011. It was the last one. Yeah, I think it was 2011 was the last year that we used those particular ratings.
So they took that away.
Correct.
We had a title, School of Distinction, School of Excellence. And then we went to the grading.
Correct.
And the initial grading was a 15-point spread.
Right.
And so now, it's going to a 10-point spread, but the 14, 15-year. And you stated that it's probably going to maybe even be a smaller spread as time goes on.
So yeah, this data here is based on the 15-point spread, what you see on this particular slide. Then the next year for what we're doing right now today, the tests that our kids take this year will be on a 10-point spread. So we can predict, unless our kids all do really, really a whole bunch better than they did last year, then this data will actually be potentially worse next year, because we're going to increase the rigor of that scale.
Right. So this data here really is for the 13, 14-year with the 10-point spread, 15-point, 15-point spread.
15 points, correct. That's correct.
Okay, I'm with you then.
Yeah.
But you know, when you look at it, and I sort of feel like, Ms. Carpenter, I don't like for the state or anyone to label kids, because everyone has equal opportunity, I think, when it comes to the classroom. We've got people in place, and you know, facilities, and all of the things that it takes to educate a child. But the rubber really hits the road, though. When you think about it, when we graduate the kids in June, we got close to $40 million in scholarships this year. And you know, it's not too awful easy to get into college these days. And these kids had to be pretty smart. They had to be doing something right to get all these scholarships. And so when you look at it like that, you know, it's sort of like the cartoon you had, you know, we'll probably, a fish will never climb a tree. And, but you know, we try to do everything that we can, you know, I know from a school board member myself, to implement policies and procedures, and you know, those type things, to help the teachers and help make things better for everybody. But the bottom line is, though, you know, you can grade schools all you want to, but when it comes down to it, though, you know, education, our kids are much more highly educated now than what they used to be. I can think back when I was in elementary school, probably in the fifth grade, the kids today are learning what I learned in the fifth grade, probably in the first grade. They're much, much smarter. And it's because technology and we've advanced so far. But I really don't see a major purpose in the grading of the schools like this. And I take the same fear that you do, you know, that parents will get the wrong impression, and they'll think, "Well, you know, our school's graded a C, and I want to go to an A school." Well, in my opinion, all of our schools are A schools already. And I just don't want the children labeled, though, by the school that they attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison?
Well, let me keep on accentuating the positive here, because the 91% of our teachers' growth of meeting and exceeding those expectations is marvelous, and they deserve billboards around the county celebrating that kind of accomplishment, or that kind of very consistent standard that we've set and that they've attained, and that we can demonstrate that their strengths are very reliable and very good. And as you said, is at least a 91% chance of getting a great teacher, and probably higher than that when you break things down. But as I've said a few other times, what are those people in Raleigh thinking? Don't try to answer that. That's a rhetorical kind of question. But often, I mean, this is, every few months, we get some kind of report, and it's pushed down from Raleigh. And it's like it just doesn't match up with what we know at the local level. And again, don't try to necessarily answer this question unless I'm really far off base, and correct me if I am. But what can we do here in Cabarrus to talk to our senator and our three House representatives and say, "Look, there is a huge disconnect between this grading system," and I don't have any idea of what part of the cosmos it, you know, came from, "but with the data that we can produce here, and we can celebrate the successes of Cabarrus County with, you know, with absolute confidence that there's a lot of great stuff going on here, how can we make our legislators, legislators, see that there's a huge disconnect between this grading system and what we know at a more granular level?" And I'll leave that up to future discussions or future information that you can present to us. But if it boils down to being able to take a House bill, Senate bill number to our House members and Senator here in Cabarrus County, give me that, and I'll do it, to be able to say that, "Look, y'all, what you're imposing from the state does not jive with the reality at the local level." And I'm sure that can be said across the state in many other ways as well. Do want to ask also, again, at another time, if you'd like, or can provide this for me, I wish I had a text description or an explanation of what all these mandated tests and assessments mean, what they're, what they purport to measure and accomplish, not necessarily the statistical trends of how we're doing on them, but just a good list and a good explanation or description of the tests that we must and have to consistently administer, so that I, for one, could have a strong understanding of that. I mean, I know a child does not have to take the SAT or the ACT, per se, but there are other tests and assessments, of course, which they must, must take. And what I would like is an explanation of what those tests are supposed to mean and accomplish and measure over time, if that could be arranged. But again, thanks for the great data, and please arm me with the means of being able to present to our representatives that this stuff, it just ain't right. It just isn't an accurate, realistic reflection of what we do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. I guess I want to explore that for just a second. So it sounds to me like, can we get maybe like a glossary of this, these are the tests, of here's what we're doing? Is that what kind of you're after? Okay, I think that's perfectly a good use of our resources to figure out, just to make sure we have a full grasp and understanding of what, of what we're being asked to do. So, okay, thank you for that, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips?
Okay. Well, very illuminating presentation, that scatter plot that you had on Slide four that correlates proficiency with poverty. I had created a plot just like that only for our elementary schools, and it shows exactly the same pattern. And then why, why did I do that? When we had the public hearing here in June about redistricting the elementary schools on the West Side, many of the parents that currently have children going to Cox Mill, which is our highest proficiency elementary school, were adamant that they did not want their children going to, you know, horrible Odell, which has, you know, 10 percentage points lower proficiencies. And so I wanted to see, you know, all right, is this really a better school, or is it that they've got better-prepared students? And you should see that trend of percent, of free and reduced lunch versus proficiency, and it's just striking. And so I think we could save the state a lot of money by just telling them that, rather than doing all these tests every year and sending all the money to Pearson to get them graded, then we could just give them a correlation and tell them what the answer's going to be beforehand. You also gave examples of two of our schools that will be rated as D schools, and because they're looking at proficiency rather than growth. I want to give you an example of a student. This is a fifth-grade student that came into our district last year from another school system, and to protect the guilty, I won't name that school system. That child quickly became a discipline problem in his or her class. His or her teacher diagnosed that the child was not able to read. This is a fifth grader. When they finally did tests, they determined that the student was reading at a first-grade level. A teacher at that student's school, who was not his classroom teacher, took that child aside during lunch hour for several months. By the end of the year, that child was reading at a fourth-grade level. That means when that child took the reading, fifth-grade reading test, he was not proficient. And therefore, that school is labeled as not doing a good job. And yet, they had one, two, three, four years of growth in one half of a year. Somehow, we have got to get that kind of a message out to parents, that that's the kind of thing that happens. That's the kind of magic. That's the kind of dedication that we have among our staff here at the Cabarrus County Schools. I don't think I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison, you had one more question, and then I'll, we're going to go. Dr. Shepherd's got a comment, and we were also going to hear from our teacher liaison. So go right ahead.
I apologize that I forgot this pretty salient question to me. Do charter schools get this information for their schools? Do charters have to abide by the same exact verbatim regime, for lack of a better word? And it would be nice for that to be published, too. But let's, let's spread the joy around if we, if we can. Thank you.
And the short answer is yes. They do fall under all of the same metrics, and it would be, I'm not sure if it'll be holistic or not. Probably, yeah. No, they don't have to report to a school board. That is very true. On camera. That's right. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Board members, any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Schumaker.
Actually, I was, I had actually made a phone call and talked about this, because in our Friday report, we had an article talking about a specific charter school in Cabarrus County that did 16 percentage points above the average on reading, math, and science. And I was wondering, do we have any schools that performed above the state's average by similar percentage points? And would they correlate to your scattergram that you provided to us today? Would they be basically high-wealth schools, if you want to label them? I hate the word labeling, because, you know, our people live congruent to certain areas, and they, it's a neighborhood process.
And the answer is yes, yes, and yes. So, I mean, we have schools that were 16 points above the state average. We, as a district, are always well above the state average. Using the state average is something you'll notice, I didn't even put in the report, because it's not something we really, we don't start our discussion there. We just, we start with other counties that are always above the state average. But what we know from charter schools across the country, and specifically here in North Carolina, is they perform no better or worse than our public schools. And they are directly correlated to their free and reduced lunch population, just like, just like we are when it comes to proficiency. So-
Well, my next question deals with, especially with the high school level, you were talking about four levels of math, and that seems to be like, that's magic on your proficiency and all of that. But how does that affect, we have several levels of CTE, Career Technical Education. And we have, you know, some disciplines, and I would say probably the FIRE Academy and all, are not really striving to get their children or their students to have four levels of math, but they are providing them with these huge skill sets that really will work well for them once they are employed by other locales. And yet, we, you know, and we're trying to set up all these academies, but at the same time, we have other, other CTE classes that don't really require this huge math proficiency, because that's the kind of jobs that they're doing are not math-related. Is, do you think that because we've put a lot more emphasis on trying to reach the child, and reach their learning style, and reach their capability styles, and their interest styles, so that they will stay engaged in education, do you think that's going to work against us with our, with the way we're going with our CTE, at least as far as this grading schedule is going?
So there's a couple of things in there. Overall, the obsession with getting more and more kids prepared to go to the university, a four-year university, is something that does compete with students that are looking to go to a community college, or pursue a trade or industry, and get a really valuable skill, and make a great living, and have a wonderful life. So some of the policies that do come from the state level kind of tell schools and school systems, "All your kids need to go to college." And so that's a particular policy that does kind of put, bind us a little bit. There is one caveat to the four-year math requirement that does allow us to substitute that fourth math for two CTE courses. So that is a little kind of inroad to kind of alleviate some of that concern. So it's kind of two-pronged in that answer.
So we could be judged in a fair light with the CTE substitution, but it's still, it seems like they want us to create nothing but leaders with this grading scale. But not everybody is going to be a leader. Some people will be different facets of leadership and different facets of support. And the role of schools is to prepare people to do what they can do the best. Would you say that that's what our role is? And to get them ready for the workplace, whatever they want to aspire to be. Do you feel like this grading system is really pushing us towards creating nothing but leaders, or focus on nothing but, on the higher form of leadership, rather than preparing a general population for the general population?
I mean, I think in general, I don't know, the grading system is so skewed towards the proficiency ranks that I'm not sure what the motive is of the, I could have conspiracy theory with you all night on that, but probably shouldn't go there publicly. I do think that public education in general has had kind of a skew towards college preparatory emphasis over the last 15 years. You know, let's get more kids into college, more kids in college. And certainly, that is not a bad thing to do, and particularly in our underrepresented groups. However, that, you could argue that that's come at the sacrifice of some of this trade and industry-related fields, and even just kind of creating an atmosphere where kids who really want to pursue trade and industry are respected, and feel like they have a high quality of life and can hold their head up as they walk across the stage at graduation and go on to work. And heck, many of them make more than our teachers in many other industries without a college degree. So-
Well, I think slides down here, when you talked about our teachers, last year, our teachers were rated, some of the top teachers in the, in this district, I mean, in this area, I guess District Six, and as well as in the rest of the state. And then you look at the performance of our, of our kids in the growth in reading, and math, and in science. And even though we know we have some issues in science, and we're working on them, those are still, overall, we have growth numbers in all of those areas, and they're good growth numbers. And they're with a 43% free and reduced lunch population. And when will we see these scores of the different schools, so we can really, I brag is the best word, but really talk about these successes? Because I would, I'd like to see the growth of some of our smaller, our schools, like you talked about Royal Oaks and the growth going on there, that you're never going to see on the proficiency. But yet, here's a school that probably is growing very rapidly. Last year, it was in the blue, and Concord Middle School was in the blue. And I would suggest that they probably are all back in the blue again this year. But you know, when do you think we'll see that information?
We can get that to you next week.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. And Dr. Phillips has another question or comment. Go right ahead.
Yeah, just hearing what Barry just said prompted an idea to come to my head. Would it be possible to get together with other school districts and come up with an alternative grading system for schools, and say, "Here's what the education community feels is the right thing to look at. And when you look at that, here's the grades that these schools get." So that we can have, so parents can have two things. They can say, "Well, here's the state, you know, all the, you know, every school in North Carolina is a D. What great public relations that'll be." And then we can say, "And here's what the education system says, you know, based on growth, based on test scores, based on college scholarships, you name it, whatever it is. Here's an alternative grading system." I think that might be one way to counteract the negative publicity that's sure to come out from all of this.
I think that's an excellent idea. Mr. Harrison, you had another comment?
I apologize for being on a roll, but maybe I'm really just on a soapbox. Two things come to mind. This is just the continued politicization of education. And that's been going on for many, many years. many, many years. It's not a recent phenomenon, but it's just making politi, making education a political football. And it's kicked this way during this political party, it's kicked that way during that political party and control of things in Raleigh. And, and I've known it most of my life, but again, it's not a recent phenomenon, but it, it just is so annoying that education has to be subjected to these pushes and pulls in both, in opposing directions. Dr. Phillips's suggestion is, is an excellent one, but it seems like there is a contradiction in their own calculation. If middle and elementary schools are judged on an 80% proficiency, but the high schools, you didn't give a number, but I'm not sure what the proficiency component is at the high school level, but the neighborhoods haven't changed? The socioeconomic demographics of the neighborhood have not changed, whether it's high school or the, or the middle schools nearby. I mean, the theater schools still have the same socioeconomic level as the, the high school that they, those students go to. It, it would, I don't know terribly much about statistics, but it seems odd that they apparently would lower the bar for proficiency at the high school level and not keep it consistent, along with the middle and up, and, um, elementary schools. I'm sorry, I will now cease my soapbox.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And we will now ask or get comments from Dr. Shepherd.
Thank you. I appreciate the excellent report, and I also appreciate the good comments from our board members tonight. I think one thing, and I'm not the best person to explain this, but I, I think that there, there needs to be some discussion around what does it mean to pass the test? And if you look at our district's scores this time, about 60% of our students passed the test, whatever that test would be. I mean, that's, that's our number. If you go back before the cut scores were changed a few years ago, you would see that 80% of our students passed the test. Well, did our school system get worse? No, of course not. The test became more rigorous. The persons that are trying to up the rigor in our school systems said, we're going to make it more difficult to pass the test so that we can get our teachers and students and superintendents and others to work harder to raise the standard. Well, that's a noble thing to do, but when you convert that notion of, I can draw that line anywhere I want to determine what percentage of students pass the test, to now we're going to grade schools based on that information, you're really mixing apples and oranges. I said, when I first met you folks in 2008, that my goal was for us to be a top-10 school district. We've never wavered in that. We've worked very hard toward that. We've made steady increases toward that. Right now, I would say, if you look at the data that you presented tonight, we're about 25th. If you average all of those rankings, so of 115 school districts in the state, we're about 25th. And if you look, of our 39 schools, 24 of them will make a grade of C or lower. Now, someone quickly do the math, a good math person. But your 25th-best school system in the state is going to have the vast majority of its schools receiving a grade of C or lower. And I ask you now, before it's even published, is that a fair way of determining the success of schools? Follow your logic, and I think you'll determine that there's something not quite right about this process. If you also look at the fact that this started in the state of Florida, and it's now going on in many, many states across this country, this notion of giving schools grades, and the majority of the schools in the districts will not succeed, I mean, that's, that's a matter of fact. Just look from state to state to state, and you'll see that you don't have to be a conspiracy theorist. There's a plan that's being executed. Now, I think Lynda Johnson and Fletcher Hartzell are doing a great job of representing our district, and I tell them that every chance I get. But not everybody in Raleigh right now is a strong supporter of public education like those two individuals are. And as a result, this information was supposed to have been shared this month by the State Board of Education, but a law was passed saying that you cannot release this information now until January the 15th. Oh, imagine that. Can't release it in October now, and it was all set to release in October. You got to wait till January 15th. Well, think about, you can, you can think about why that might be the case, and yes, there are others that are guilty of doing similar things. I'm well aware of that. But I would say that there's another reason that we need to think it might be. When does the General Assembly reconvene for its long session? January, right? So, if this information is released about the time that our representatives start thinking about budgeting for next year, wouldn't it be very convenient for them to say, and again, I'll excuse the two that I mentioned from our district, look at public schools failing. Here's the data that tells you that. And as a result, we want to send more money toward charter organizations. We want to send more money toward school vouchers. Can you not see this as setting us up for that big fall that's going to occur in January? And so, that's why I, I appreciate the efforts of Matthew and your department in getting, predicting what these scores could be in advance, and I, again, thank you for your very eloquent presentation. And I think our community needs to be ready, and I think we need to be aware. And if I had my way, we would be fighting back to say, don't do it. I was in Florida a few years ago, when this information was released. The headlines of the paper said, "Real Estate Agents Appalled by Scores of Schools." Can you imagine trying to sell a home in a district that's labeled a D? We need to get on this now as a community. We need to be aggressive about it, and we need our General Assembly, our governor, to join together to say, this is not going to happen in the state of North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. And we will also ask our teacher liaison, Allison, if she'd like to make a comment because she will be, she works on the front lines where these schools are and where the grades will be coming and the reaction to parents. So, Allison, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. I'd just like to speak, I guess, on behalf of a teacher because, as terrible as it is that they're labeling students, they're also labeling teachers, you know? And so, it just scares me. It scares me for the school culture. It's also labeling administrators. The entire school culture will be affected by this. So, I know there are unbelievably wonderful teachers here in Cabarrus County that work countless hours, countless hours, for what they do for their students. And so, I can't imagine, and we have so much pride in what we do as well, so I can't imagine if my school, all of a sudden, was a D or an F, and how that would make me feel about all of that work that I've put in. And so, it's just, it just scares me for the whole school culture, and that's all I want to say about that.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your, your insight and your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there any way that we, I know that Mr. Phillips is a, he can do great resolutions. I would love for us to do, he, he is so wonderful. I would love for us to do some type of resolution to say, we are not in support of this at all, and for us to, as he says, come up with a, a great thing, saying what our solution to it is, but we need to say something, and say something now.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I don't know what, let's get a little nod of the head. But first, Mr. Dr. Phillips, are you willing to, to put pen to paper if the board?
I will, but I need my English professor to help.
Okay. Well, we will trust David to be the editor. Does, does anybody have any objection to Dr. Phillips?
What, Mr. Chairman, let me, let me, well, let me, let me add something.
I don't think so. Let's just get some comments in case somebody doesn't want to do that.
Let me add something to this. Since you're on that, you're on the right track, but I did attend a law conference with the North Carolina School Board Association earlier in this year, it might have been in the fall of last year, and they're all over this. The School Board Association is, you know, they, they were not wanting this. They said that it would be bad for public education, be bad for schools to be labeled and to be graded like this. So, I think that maybe a resolution might be a right way to go, but then I think we need to maybe first see where the School Board Association is on their action, checking with the legal department there at the School Board Association, see where they are, rather than going ahead and just doing our own resolution to start with.
Well, I, I think that's a good point. I think we can do both things sort of simultaneously. Maybe we'll, we'll give Mark the task of, hey, can you maybe look and see where they are? I mean, I think that'd be some pretty easy conversation to have. In the meantime, maybe Jeff can pin something, and we can come back together. I, I don't think we need a motion and a second and a vote. I think a nod of the head is, is fine to proceed with, just trying to put a resolution together, and then we can formally vote on it or adopt it as a board. Does that sound okay to everybody? Okay, fantastic. Well, thank you, Ms. Carpenter, for that suggestion, and we will move on to 4.01 and ask Ms. Klutz to come to the podium for a budget amendment.
Good evening. Last month, I was before you and asked you to approve a budget amendment to reclass some funds so that we could approve a change order to change the design and, from the original K5 grade configuration to the 325 configuration. You approved that budget amendment. Now, I'm asking you to reverse that budget amendment because the county commission denied that request to move those funds. Now, in, in the meantime, I'm asking you to pull those dollars from our fund balance so that we can move forward until we have a better solution.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Board members, we, we have a bill to pay, is basically what, what this boils down to. So, I don't know if we need everybody to comment, but I'll just kind of glance at this side of the table. David, Jeff?
I'm good.
Rob, Carol, anybody want to make a comment or ask a question? Ms. Carpenter?
Well, basically, we've got to build, pay, and we've got to build, and we need to build. And I think we need to go ahead and move forward because if we delay it, we're delaying getting that building built.
Okay. So, this will come out of fund balance. Everybody okay for consent? Oh, I'm sorry.
Only that I am profoundly disappointed in our, in the majority of our county commissioners for putting us in this situation. I am profoundly disappointed in our county commissioners for this action, but I, I respect you being able to pull it together. Thank you.
Duly noted. Did you have another question or comment?
Because basically, as I understand, and we were just moving things, we were within our budget, correct? Now, correct me if I'm wrong, if I say something wrong, because basically, we were just moving things within line items. Basically, it was within the budget, and we were just moving it from one line item to another line item, but we were always staying within our budget for this particular thing. We, we had actually changed the scope of something, but we had never gone out of the amount we were actually going to pay our architects. Correct?
You're correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was not saying something that was incorrect, but we were just kind of going, it was supposedly in one line item, and that was a different type of thing, and so we just had to change it. So, that was all we were asking for.
From one line item to the other, we were within our budget.
That is correct. And to, just to refresh everybody's memory, this was the change order from the architect to change to a K, uh, K five, 35 elementary school.
That's right.
Have to get that right.
35.
From a K5 to a 35. And it was not extra money, it was a transfer fund. So, okay, Ms. Monroe, we'll put that on the consent agenda.
Can I say one thing?
Oh, yep, go right ahead.
Just as an aside, the savings on that change was about $700,000. So, we've got a seven-to-one payback on that particular investment.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Okay, we'll move on to 4.02 and ask Dr. Shepherd to make his recommendation for the employee tuition.
Thank you very much. Our human resource, Chief Human Resource Officer is not available tonight, so I don't mean to take credit for her. Good work with she and Kelly and others have put together a good plan that we're presenting to you, and I just want to share the information with you. We currently have 41 students in this district whose parents are full-time employees, and those parents choose to bring their students to school in the Cabarrus County Schools, and we currently ask them to pay $1,666 in order to do that. The research that we've done says that we are one of very few school districts in the state that continue to do that. We bring to you as a recommendation that we do away with that requirement, that we allow full-time employees of the school district to bring their children to our school district with them at no charge, and in turn, then we can be reimbursed by the state, if they're here in the first two months, for that amount of money. I think that the total amount, the cost for this, $68,000 for this year. Now, we know that as soon as we say that we're allowed to do that, that other teachers will want to, and we know that that might result in more than 41, hopefully, and as a result, it might have a larger cost to us, but we also believe that we'll be able to use this as a recruiting tool and be able to recruit teachers to come to our district because they can bring their children with them. So, I bring that to you tonight as my recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd, and we will have a discussion or any questions, and we'll start with Mr. Walter.
Does it have any tax implications on the employee? It will not. Okay, I'm supportive of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter?
How many total students, how many total individuals do we have paying that amount now?
Forty-one.
No, total, though. Individuals, though. I mean, beside employee.
How many families?
How many families do we have paying that?
We don't have that figure, Ms. Carpenter.
Kelly, do you mind just going to the podium in case you, there's a question you need to answer, and you'll, you'll be right there? So, 41 is the total?
I believe they're all employees at this point. Normally, if there's anyone outside of an employee, it may be one or two, but they're generally all employees. They're not, we're not collecting tuition from anyone that's not an employee. We don't let them inside our system if they're not inside our, our boundaries.
Okay. There's no one outside, then, that, I thought we had a few exceptions to that.
Donna will check those records, but generally, the, we allow them in because they're employees, and that's why we collect the tuition. But if there's exception to that, there are very few.
Okay. Because that's why, because I thought we had some that had, had come.
Okay. But there would be few.
Okay.
I think we can bring you the exact number back. As we say, very few. The very few we're talking about are ones who were admitted due to extreme hardship issues in their other district where they were attending and had no other options, and that's where our district worked with other districts. It's a very small number.
Okay. And you don't know how many that we actually have that still charge that? You don't know the number of the districts where they still charge?
I, I'm pretty sure it's only one other district from my conversation with Lynda, and it was Chapel Hill, Carver. It's the only other district that does it.
And they only charge a partial rate of their, their local tuition, not their full rate? Because as I, as I recall, and this is just from numbers from Budget Committee, as we did some research, their local rate is, is two or three times what ours is, and they only charge the tuition of $1,000 per student. So, it's partial.
Okay.
Is that, is that it? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumacher, do you have any questions or comments?
I think this is kind of in the world of supplies that our teachers supply, and here and now, they're trying to get a quality of life and get their children near them, and there'll be no way that they could probably teach in our system. And being the fact that we don't provide the same local supplement that most of our neighboring systems provide, this is, this is a great opportunity for them to, to take something off of their platter. Probably what will happen is the money that they would have paid for those students will probably go into our children as far as supplies and other things. So, we might see a beneficial account anyway, because our teachers are strapped, and the fact that they're bringing their kids from other, from other districts to here to be in our schools, I think says a lot about our school system, because they could have them over there if they wanted to, but it also says a lot about the, the sacrifice that they're making to be in our system, and, and it's not for the money.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Mr. Schu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is something just a long time coming, and I think it's a good thing. Dr. Shepherd mentioned recruiting. Not only will it help us recruit teachers, but it'll help us retain those teachers that bring their kids to the school district. And so, I think it's a good thing, and I think that, you know, we'll be a better system by doing this.
Thank you, Ms. Schu. Mr. Harrison?
So, we're saying that this would be a retroactive measure for this year, for 2014, 2015, and that in, if we make this a
2015. And that in, if we make this decision now, within that first 60 days of the start of the school year, that the state will reimburse us accordingly? If, if, if the parents bring their children back to?
Right. The state, they're already in our ADM numbers. And so, we would get the state reimbursement for those students, yes.
Okay.
I think what we're, we're looking to is if, if we, if we're doing recruiting and we get teachers to bring their students here, we'll get those ADM dollars for those, those students in the future, too.
Heck, who knows? Some of the teachers who left us back in the spring to go to other counties, maybe they'll come back again next year. There will be a true retention plus for our great teachers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips?
Do you have any idea what, what our average cost per teacher is when we're recruiting? Because if, if by doing this, we save not having to go out and hire a new teacher, it may well pay for itself.
I do not know.
Yeah, I imagine Glenda might have more of a handle on that. But that, that would be a good, good piece of information to have.
It would be.
In any event, as, as someone who benefited from an employee tuition discount program when I was in college, I'm certainly not going to vote against this.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And, and, and yes, I'm in total agreement that in this day of age where we're fighting to keep teachers, this is a, the, the, the upside far outweighs the monetary piece on our side, which is not, not overly significant. So, I did, something came up, I think maybe it was David, that I, I want to make sure I understand. If we have a teacher whose child does not go here, but then they pull them here, that's what you're talking about of, in the first two months?
Next, next year. If they pull them here next year.
What about next week? I mean, we're, we're, are we?
Next, so if we're past...
It's 60 days, it's two months.
Yeah. If we're past, it's the, the better of the first and second month. So, after we pass the second month, we wouldn't get the, the ADM for the, the child.
Right. Okay. Well, that's what I was asking. But I mean, if it happens before that, we do. But, okay. Well, I just want to make sure I understood that. So, okay.
If we can get an ADM update, you can...
Do I have an ADM update?
Can you send it to us or get it to us?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Okay. And Ms. Carpenter, do you have another question?
One other question. Are we not giving the employees discounts on daycare also?
Carolyn, I am happy to update you with that information. I just don't have it with me right now.
I thought maybe, do you know?
Kids Plus?
Kid Plus?
Employee discount?
Or, or at France, Mary Frances Wal, because with the daycare.
Mary Frances Wal, that is, there is a discount. It's just $100 a week. That's a discount.
We do give a employee discount for the morning and afternoon at Kids Plus for the employees. But it's not much, like maybe a dollar a day. I mean, it's not anything like that.
Okay. So, it's, I just had heard, I knew there was some type of discount for, that's the after-school, then?
Yes, ma'am, in the morning. The idea is that many of our teachers, it's very expensive to have them leave or have their students go to other daycares. And obviously, we want to promote our own. But often, it's just a 45-minute time period where the student doesn't need to be in the teacher's classroom and needs to be in another location. So, we have like a reduced pricing, reduced hours to help cover that for employees.
Oh, but it's, okay. I didn't know what it was. I just knew there was something at Mary Frances Wal. And I didn't know what that amount was. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Carpenter. I get a nod to the heads for consent. Okay. Ms. Monroe, we will put that on the consent agenda. And we will move on. Thank you, Kelly. We will ask Dr. Louder to the podium. And we will do policies and policy, policy revisions, the first reading. And I don't, you guys, well, go ahead, Dr. Louder.
The only policy for first reading was the one that the board asked us to take back to our policy committee and review, the technology responsible use policy. At the policy committee meeting, we spent about 45 minutes on this one, quite a long debate to try to, or not really a debate as much as just discussing it. And when that debate was over, it was unanimous by the committee to not alter the policy and leave it as it was and bring it back.
Okay, board members. So, the policy came here, we sent it back, and it's now come back from the policy committee with the recommendation that we have no changes. So, you, we'll start with Mr. Walter. And any questions or comments on this, the policy?
I was the one that brought it to your attention because it seemed, the way I read it, and that it would prohibit employees from using the social media aspect. I mean, we're in the 21st century now. We have, at least from my, my look, we had over 20 employees that are using social media to communicate school-based things. And this policy here says it's prohibited. As I read it, I mean, I see, as, as you say, you're, you're telling me that, if you can go, go ahead and explain that one more time. So, maybe the public can understand it as well. But I don't, I don't see the connection on the two.
Yes. So, in the discussion we had, what we said is best practice is for employees not to use their personal email, websites, et cetera, to promote school things. And kind of in that discussion, what was, what was brought out is a lot of people are doing that because it's their network of people that they work with. So, principals, central office people who have, for example, a personal Twitter account or a personal Facebook account are communicating sometimes about that, like, hey, this afternoon, we're having a fundraiser or whatever to connect with that group. And while the best practice that we would recommend is not to do that, to have your own school or school system website or email or whatever, that it's kind of something that we can't necessarily stop because all these things are connected. And part of my personality as a principal is, yes, I'm a mother, but I'm also a principal. It's my job and these things mix. So, while we say, hey, best thing to do is not to do that personally, these things overlap and there's not that much you can do with it as we change. So, while we say, don't do that, it's kind of something that's already there. So, two paragraphs down, we really say, if you choose to do this, even though it's not the best practice we recommend, then if you do anything that has, quote, "a negative impact on the employee's ability to perform his or her job as it relates to working with students or employees," then you're subject to discipline. And the, Dr. Probst, as the technology person, really feels like that that's where we want to be. Our attorney in the policy committee felt like that that was where we wanted to be. And so, that we stay broad in this area to say, it's personal behavior that we want to be able to come back and hold to policy, instead of trying to create a line-by-line policy in an area that's going to change inherently every week as we move forward. So, again, this is not something that we spent two minutes on, we spent close to an hour on. And when we were done, board members, attorney, technology director, everyone there said, best thing to do is keep this the same.
Okay. My, my point being is I don't see anywhere in there that said, if you do these things. It's, it's, it says everywhere I read it that you, not unless you're, you're interpreting the word "may not," use personal email accounts. But that's, I think it ought to be, I mean, it's happening. People do it. We're, we're doing it and for a good purpose, I guess. It connects, it connects to, it connects to, to students.
Okay, so...
But the whole key is to be responsible about it, not, not to prohibit it.
Our response to this is not to prohibit it. From the aspect of, we want teachers, staff members to be professional. And we want personal lives to not be in the workplace. So, one way to look at this is, let's just take politics, for example. I, I don't know how else to explain it. If I, as a citizen, want to publicly say who to vote for in office, and it's separated from school, I can do that. But as an employee, I should not use my school email or my school Facebook page or my school webpage to promote political use.
And I am right there with you, Kelly.
And so, that's kind of the way that we're looking at this, is that it's more behavior of the employee. And we, our advice in this policy is to separate the two. And I will tell you, you are correct. We have examples in this county where employees are not getting this message. But instead of changing the policy, what we need to do is when we find these examples, is to educate the employee. And many of our employees are new to this. They've jumped on Facebook. They've jumped on webpages. And we're excited. But they need to be taught how to keep the professional and personal separate.
My, my key is, is again, responsible and professional use. And if they don't do such a thing, then there's a ways to go ahead and enforce that. But this here had said they are not, not to. So, anyway, that was just my reading of it. And again, that's, that's how I interpret it. And then my other question with, with this thing is, again, reading these things to, to make them sound better. We use some bigger words in here that would probably be easier just to use a word that most folks understand. I think you have it as, I'm not sure if I can pronounce it right, para, paralog, para, was it paragological?
Paragological.
Okay. Well, that, that word is in there several times. And I guess the intent of that would be educational. And that's just to read better. Those are, those are my comments on this policy.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any questions about this?
We spent 45 minutes on it. We spent 45 minutes on it. And we all come to the conclusion, we didn't feel like that it needed to be changed, that it said, as, as Chris stated, that it was okay. And that the paragraph, which, which paragraph was it called?
Yeah. On page five of six, under employee, two, number two, employees, the last paragraph, if an employee creates, is the one that we felt called.
That called, caught it if it needed to. So, we felt that it, it did what it needed to do if the, if the individual did it. And, and we all said the same thing. I mean, personally, I have my personal email. Anything that is done, it's done on that. My school, if somebody does something, sends me something, it's always done. School stuff's just on this. My personal is on my personal. And I keep those completely separate. And that's just, just the way I do, do that. So, and that, but that's, that's all comment I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, do you have a question for Dr. Louder or comment? Let's get this thing passed. Mr. Schu? Mr. Harrison?
I'll concur with Ms. Carpenter about the time we did spend on this. And as I recall, Dr. Probst said something, the big word is prescient, but I'll just say, she was, she was real smart when she said this, that obviously, use of technology is a behavioral thing. But she said something to the effect that it's taken you years to get a certain amount of adherence to the current policy as it is. And that it would take years to get people back into some other mode if we, you know, changed this policy very much. But in the meantime, there would be a lot of inconsistent use of the policy. As I recall, your, your point of view was that the adherence to this policy is pretty much buttoned down and predictable and stable, for the most part. And, and that the policy's been socialized very well over the years and is, and is being followed fairly well currently, was, was, as I recall, generally, your, your rather passionate statement, which I respect to great deal, too. So, I'm also in agreement not to make any changes to the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Dr. Phillips?
Well, I guess I'm coming down on, on Rob's side on this. It, in that section two on page five, it just says, "Employees may not use personal websites, personal email accounts, or personal social media to communicate regarding school-related matters." Now, does that mean you can't, as a principal, say, "Hope to see everybody at the Fall Festival this weekend" on their Twitter account? Or they can't say, "Hope everybody will dress up in the school colors for a big football game against our arch rival" on their Twitter account? Because to me, that's school-related.
I wish Sarah was here. Because Sarah, our, our other attorney, was really part of this conversation. And we came down on that piece going, does that, is that what that means? And she kept taking us back to the first part of the policy where it talks about doing harm. There is absolutely nothing wrong, and I'll use Ronnie as an example. Ronnie has her own personal Facebook page. And she said, "Had a great day with United Way. Cabarrus County School Employees Participate in United Way." There's absolutely nothing wrong in that. But what does become wrong is if Ronnie is using her personal Facebook page to push a political agenda or to put negative, the school system in negative light or to make comments that would be inappropriate professionally. It's inappropriate for her to use her personal email to contact students. And this is really, when we designed this policy several years ago, this was the whole thing we needed to do. We had to get people to separate and not only protect the students, but protect the employee, too, not to be using these personal mechanisms. They should be using professional sites to communicate. And that's the whole design of the policy. Mark, do you want to add to it? Because that's...
I think that's right. I know Sarah and I have talked a lot about the policy. And I think our recommendation is you do, in the policy, have a bright line. I agree, sometimes what is school-related and what's not isn't always going to be a bright line. As a practical matter, are we going to be, you know, criticizing someone to say, hey, don't forget to wear your school colors? No. But we need, if it's on the school system website or one of our sponsored social media connection devices, that's something we can control and monitor. If there are communications with students, we need that to be on system communications. If parents are individually, if, you know, having communications with employees or teachers are talking to students on Facebook, we can't monitor it. We can't control it. We don't know about it. And there's lots of examples, including some bad case law, about what happens when you get that kind of direct communication. So, I think our, our recommendation is have a policy that says, if you're going to communicate on a school, you're making a communication to your staff, to parents, to students, use school system resources for that. Are we going to go fire people because they said, "Wear your school colors" on their personal account? No. But we may counsel them. And again, for substantive communications, what we want people to get in the habit of is, if I'm communicating about school business, I'm going to use a school resource, just like you use a school email account when you're doing schools. And that's what, that's what we're recommending as the policy. The policy should be, if it's school-related, I'll use that. Is there grayness in what is school-related versus, this is my personal reminder about the Halloween Fall Festival? Yes. And are there overlapping networks where you've got, you know, a lot of teachers in your school are friends and you guys talk about the Fall Festival the next day? Yes. Are we going to be disciplining those interactions? Probably not. But should the rule be that if you're having an official school-related communication, you want to, we want you to do it on school resources? Yes. That's our recommendation. So, that when the bad communication happens or the, you know, improper suggestion to a student or the inappropriate posting or the bad picture, we've got a policy when we do need to act that says, this is our expectation. You should be, you should not have sent that political message out on a school resource, or you should not have sent that homework assignment out on your personal Facebook page. That's, you know, if it's about homework, it's school-related, you should use the system. So, it is a, a bright line that we're recommending at a policy level. We understand at an implementation level, as these things evolve and change, there will be challenges. And, and I think, obviously, you've got discretion in terms of, you know, what's a problem. And that's why there are other language about the negative impact on job performance and students is in there to try to focus on. That's what we're worried about. But I think that's, that's where, that's where your attorneys come down on, on this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Dr. Phillips, did you have any, did you want to comment on, on Mark's?
I, I, I comprehend what you, you said. I'm skeptical that it's, it would, you know, that employee could come and say, "Look, here's 28 examples where you didn't discipline anybody for doing a Twitter message. I do one. And you disciplined there. And I'm disciplined. Your policy is overly vague. How was I ever supposed to know?" So, because of that, I'm going to vote against it. I also think that we need to embrace the modern way that students communicate. And if teachers want to communicate via those methods, we should encourage it.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And by virtue of saying that you want to vote against it, Ms. Monroe, we'll put this on action so that we'll have a separate vote for this. And I, I wanted to ask if, I assumed either you or Sarah were at the meeting. It sounds like Sarah was there and there was a lot of conversation. So, I hate to use this example, but this, what it sort of sounds like to me is the beach community that has a statute, a law that says there's no alcohol on the beach. But everybody knows what that really means is you have it in a cup so that you're just not acting crazy. But they're, they enforce it so that if you're acting out of hand, they have something to hang their hat on. But they're not coming to open your cooler or look in your cup. So, they, the law is there, but they sort of go about in a way, a different way to enforce it. So, it, you know, it's sort of, and in the policy, it talks about that this is a fluid, very much a fluid dynamic because of the change in technology. So...
Do you want to recommend that we add that as a clarifying example?
Argument by analogy there.
Well, I apologize. I, you know, I guess sometimes the real-world example maybe is not the best one to use at a school meeting. But that's, that's the only one I could come up of. But I understand that dynamic.
Sounds like some personal experience going on there, Mr. Chair.
We're, we're, yeah. We're going to have this on the, if this is something comical, I'm not going to...
Can we put the koozie clause in it?
We'll call it the koozie clause. We'll call it the koozie clause. Okay. This will go on action, and if something comes up this week, somebody has a comment, they certainly can ask another question. I think it is pretty telling that this is the, we've had it here twice, and it's been back to the committee, and come back to us, and was unanimous at that level. So, I understand the questions, but Dr. Louder and his group in the committee, which does have two board members, have looked at it twice. So, Ms. Monroe, we will be on action, and we will move on. We'll keep Dr. Louder here for the policies revisions on second reading.
And again, we had two policies, which were some recommendations that we've changed to your recommendations, and I haven't heard any questions on second read, so I assume we can move forward.
I have a couple.
Okay. Rob, go ahead.
Thirty-two, twenty-six. Just need to define what you say CIPA in the document. I think it's defined, it should be defined up there in the first paragraph.
So, you just mean, put something in, or in other words, write that all the way out, and then put CIPA?
It's written out, but there's no abbreviation next to it, then towards the, in the middle of the body of the policy, it goes back and uses abbreviation.
Just put the abbreviation right next to it.
Doesn't define what that is.
The first time, yes. Okay?
Thirty-two, twenty-five. I think you have a wrong reference in section E. It's a personal website, since we just changed one policy, that now reference is wrong.
Where are you? I don't see a thirty-two, twenty-five.
That was the one we just did, right?
That's the one, it refers to that policy, I think. Hold on, let me bring, it's thirty-three, twenty-seven, excuse me.
Thirty-three, twenty-seven.
Thirty-two, twenty-seven?
Thirty-two, twenty-seven. I'll get it eventually.
Okay. And what's the issue with thirty-two, twenty-seven?
You have a reference to policy thirty-two, twenty-five, that's a reference, it's referencing a document, a section that you've changed.
Can you show us where it's referencing that?
Let me pull it up.
I mean, I see where it says, the first line references the policy, but other, is there something specific in the policy?
Yes.
Is it the personal website thing? I think page three, number five, five A.
Well, let's let Rob tell us, since he's the one...
Yeah. Section E refers to, "For further information regarding personal websites, see section D of policy thirty-two, twenty-five." Well, section D, you've changed that, so it's no longer section D, it's a different section.
Okay. Everybody got that?
Okay.
Did I see where we are?
Put your number.
It is under small e on page...
Three of six.
Three of six. The first paragraph under small e, where it says, "See section D of policy thirty-two, twenty-five." Did we just change D? And does this make that reference incorrect? Well, I'll tell you what, we'll move on, we'll let Mark check that.
Okay. He'll check that.
Got another one?
I had a question. Do we want to add social media to, a section on social media to this policy?
The same one?
Yeah, the same policy.
Did that come up at the policy committee?
No, that hasn't come up? Okay.
I don't quite feel too germane, but they may be somehow...
I'm not sure if the two are quite to be matched up that way, because web development was not exactly social media use.
Do we have something?
Rob, would you be satisfied if they just make a note, and the next time they bring, it's at the committee level, just maybe have that conversation? Okay. That'd be fine.
Okay.
Do you know which one he was talking about?
I'm not exactly sure.
Okay. Well, let's back up, don't go too fast.
Still the website development.
Thirty-two, twenty-seven webpage development. He's just asking if, in that policy, we need to reference social media.
Yes. Well, where else do we address our social media rules and guidelines, and how we set that up, and how we do things?
Okay. So, this policy is just for the webpage development.
Okay.
The social media policy, we do not have a separate social media policy, because we decided, as a district, two years ago, that we were going to come in on responsible use, which is the one that you've just reviewed. And that's where all other avenues of social media are discussed, as well as the webpage.
Okay.
Okay. Does that satisfy your question?
I guess so.
Okay. Do you have another one?
On that policy, no.
Another policy.
Let me see. I had a question on the one that says, "A free and reduced for lunch."
Sixty-two, twenty-five.
This is just, I guess, a question more for Kelly. It says that here in the policy, it says, "The principals shall make the school nutrition's program web based on paper applications, or for free or reduced price, meals readily available to parents and gardens, and shall accept completed applications at any time during the school year." Didn't we just say on Connect Ed that had a set-up, set a cutoff date on this? And then, again...
Tell me which paragraph, so everybody knows which one you're on.
I'm actually...
Okay. Second one down.
Okay. I am not familiar with a Connect Ed, except I did kind of hear from our principal that they were really glad that we sent something out reminding parents to turn in their free and reduced applications. There is no cutoff. If a parent qualifies for it in January, then they can submit that paperwork.
The Connect Ed said exactly the opposite of that. So, there was a cutoff of ten, ten, five, fourteen, and that your child may not get the free and reduced benefits if that wasn't completed.
Okay. So, let me clarify this.
Well, hang on a second. Dr. Shepherd has an answer.
Last year's qualification extends into this year to a certain point. And then, after that point, then you have to have submitted an application again. So, what, I guess the communication is, if you're going on last year's qualifications, you've got until this date to get it in, or we will not be able to qualify you any longer, but we'll accept the application all year long.
Okay. I don't think we made that clear when our Connect Ed was sent out.
Yeah. We have a buffer. We've got so many weeks of a buffer, and that's exactly it.
Okay. That was just a question on that policy. And the network security, again, Kelly.
I wasn't supposed to...
Sorry to keep picking on you tonight. We refer in this policy to a chief technology officer, and we refer to that several times, but yet, we don't identify who that is. Should we change this policy to your title?
No. We talked about this one, and we decided that policies should be general, that because of title changes, and we discussed this one with Sarah, that we didn't want to change the title. I still have the job description, I just might not have the title.
I would suggest, on our website, especially your page there, that says, "Our chief technology officer is..." You know, I don't think we say that, so...
I'm going to have a really long title after tonight. Good.
But anyway, that would just make it, you know, again, if someone's reading this policy and saying, "This person, well, who is this person?", and at least, it needs to be defined somewhere.
Yes, sir. Good point.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions about the policies? And this is second reading, so, I mean, all these have been to us before. No? You're good? You're good? Rob, did you get enough of your questions to answer to go consent?
I think so.
Okay. So, Ms. Monroe, we will be on consent for policies on the second reading. Thank you, Dr. Louder. And we will move on to four-point-oh-five, School Improvement Plan, and Matthew Fell, and I did not receive my thumb drive yet, so we'll put this on action, because I may have questions next week that I don't ask tonight, because I haven't seen, I don't have the thumb drive yet. But that's okay. It's a lot to go through, we probably need more time to look at it, anyway. So, but with that, Matthew, go right ahead.
Well, Blake, I do have a few extra. If you want me to hand you one before you leave. And if anybody else needs one, I can make another real quick and hand it to you.
I flew in and out to get dressed, and saw a little folder on the desk, so I think it's probably there, but, you know, if it's not, I'll make arrangements to come get one. But save that, because you may need to give that to somebody else.
All right. Excellent. So, school teams have worked diligently to prepare their school improvement plans. They started in the summer with school improvement plan support sessions that were leveled, depending on their rubric scores from their plans. You've received them, hopefully, or will, when you get home tonight, these on a thumb drive. And we just ask that you take some time over the next week to review these carefully. And should you have any questions, please email me, and let's try to get our questions answered before next week, when we bring it back for action.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions after having, and we'll start with Dr. Phillips. No? You're good?
I'm in the same position you are.
Okay. Got you. Mr. Harrison?
I would like to record to show that, yes, I did read every one of them. I'm still dizzy from it, so it's a tremendous amount of information. And yes, Dr. Shepherd, we are a data-driven school system here. But I'll present a lot of these comments to you. I want to commend all the schools and the myriad number of people who are involved in all the detail of these plans. It's just a great deal of information, certainly, to go through. The bigger question of several other, many of the plans were blank in certain spots. Will we get updates on these plans at future times in the year, quarterly, or in another two or three-month cycle, as any of these plans progress? Maybe they were, maybe it was so templated that there were sections that didn't need to be addressed. Maybe that's what the thing is. But if there, is there information that has yet to be resolved, or is each plan buttoned down as it is?
So, the plans are cyclical. They're based on a continuous improvement model, which means that they don't write a plan and set it aside for the year. The blank areas that you saw are actually their next cycle reports.
Future cycle.
Correct. So, I want to say December, early December, will be their first cycle, where they do their check act, which means they're going to look at the data they said they were going to track, they're going to look at the steps that they did, and kind of take stock. Where are we? Have we done? What do we need to do to improve? Then they fill out that other section. We had a very quick turnaround time, once we finally got all these in for you, so we didn't just delete those. When we do post them up on the website to avoid confusion, we do post them without those blank sections, so that it doesn't confuse folks and wonder why there's, you know, what you might think of as missing pieces to the document.
One thing that did stick out in just a few cases were the page two or three, in which a tally was offered of the number of qualified staff who voted on the plan, and without naming names, there were a few situations where, maybe I read it wrong, and maybe there's perfectly good reason for this, that a very high percentage or proportion of eligible people to vote on the plan voted against the plan. Now, you know what I'm talking about, without going into the details of that. Some of those sections were completely blank, others had practically 100% approval of each plan, but there were some plans, there was a significant number of votes either against the plan, or in, who abstained from voting for the plan. I don't know what the reasoning is for those situations. Maybe it's not germane, but if twenty voted for and fifty voted against...
Yeah, it's germane.
Right? What's up with that?
Right.
And, again, I'll just go through any other comments I have, since we're going to carry this over to next week.
I will follow up with those schools. I also, you looked very carefully, which is good.
Yes, sir, I did. I'm still dizzy.
We do have about ten schools whose assurances page, which is that page that you're referring to, is not complete, and I, we're working with those schools. It's not part of the state requirement or state law for school improvement planning. It's what we do locally to ensure that certain things happen in relation to our laws and policies. So, I'm going to make sure that those get completed and followed up with, and those sorts of things. But I also check on those ones with the votes, question them.
And as you alluded to, just there, some quick synopsis of why this school improvement plan process is getting more visibility, and is, it's been in place for several years, but it's been escalated by the legislative bodies. As I recall, it's, isn't the school improvement plan under additional legal requirement in the last year than it was in prior years?
The only recent change in legislation regarding school improvement plans was relative to the safe schools component.
Okay.
Meaning that if you guys were going to review one of the safety plans, which we follow the district's plans, you see that on the assurances sheet, that you can do that in closed session.
Okay.
That you wouldn't share with the public what those steps were.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schu, any question?
I'm in review.
Mr. Schumacher?
I only have a week to look at this. I need some help. My iPad doesn't plug in a thumb drive.
I will email our chief technology officer and see if she can give you some support.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Ms. Carpenter? We'll try to work on your either thumb drive or iPad. We'll get you squared away.
And I'm still working. I've just gotten mine, and, you know, being up to two to three o'clock in the morning, working on a lot of other things, I am working on it, though. I haven't gotten as detailed as David, but I am still working on it.
Okay. No, that's okay. That's why I wanted to go ahead and say upfront, we'll put it on action. Just give us some more time. Mr. Walter?
I'm still going through them as well. Some of the footers, though, on some of these are from last year. They didn't change the footers on some consistently, so they kind of look similar, so someone can go through a little bit easier. When they look similar, it's a little bit easier to go through them. And the last years are still on the website, is that?
They should be, unless the schools removed them, yes.
But they're on our page, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. I'll save my comments next week, too.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to reiterate, it's written on our sheet, but for the general public and the viewing audience, that, you know, North Carolina statute says that we are to accept or reject a school improvement plan, and it's not supposed to be substantially changed. So, this isn't a document or something, we're going to hem and haul and grab and change this, and look at that, whatever. It's more or less an up or down vote. So, just be ready next week that that's the intention. Even, but with all the data, be fair to Matthew, try to give him a, hey, if you've got significant questions, please email them ahead of time, so he can answer them here. We want the answers out in public, but you've got to give him a, give a chance, but we've got to vote on it next week. So, just to give everybody that chance. The only other comment I want to make is, the technology progression of the system, I find interesting. My first year, we got a book, massive book, then last year, the year before, we got a disc, and now we get a thumb drive.